The time is now seven o'clock, and I would like to call the order of the Beloit City Council meeting to order at this time. May we have the roll call vote, please?
Roll call shows all seven city councillors are present.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please rise, please?
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, special order of the day and announcements. We do have a proclamation recognizing July as Park and Recreation Month, Mr. Botts, and it would be presented by councillor, Vice President, Vanda Bogart.
Thank you. This is an official proclamation of the city of Beloit, whereas parks and recreation programs are integral parts of communities throughout this country, including here in Beloit, Wisconsin, and whereas our parks and recreational programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreations programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism and attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas provide water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Beloit, Wisconsin recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreational resources, now therefore the city council of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim the month of July 2010 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Beloit, and encourages residents to explore and enjoy the various parks and leisure activities offered in the city. Adopted this 21st day of June 2010, Kevin D. Levy, President, Beloit City Council. Accepting this is Mr. Botts from our Public Works Department. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank council for recognizing the Parks and Leisure Services Group and for the proclamation for the month. If you check your website or the letters sent out on our Leisure Services Group, they have a lot of activities planned. The summer camp programs are starting now. It'll give good opportunities for the youth to get out into the parks and enjoy themselves. Venture to the pool, it's been crowded lately because of the weather, and the golf course has also been crowded too. So take advantage of the opportunities you have in the city of Beloit and go out and use them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. 4A, please.
4A is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for properties located at 911 and 915 Broad Street from C1 Office District to C3 Community Commercial District. There is a request for a first reading and to suspend the rules for a second reading, and Plan did recommend approval 5-0.
Ms. Christiansen, please.
Bindiar Inc. has applied for this rezoning for 903 Broad Street from C1 to C3 in order to expand the gas station that he owns at 903 Broad Street. He currently has a purchase contract with the current owners, Greg and, no, I don't have the names in front of me, the Heggies, and his intent is to expand the gas station. If the zoning is approved, he will proceed with that purchase. The intent, he will have to go through the whole site plan architectural and building plan approval process if approved. At the public hearing, Ruth Sigworth, who owns three adjacent properties, came to the meeting with her sons and objected to the zoning action. She would like it to just stay what it is zoned, and after that meeting she filed a zoning protest petition, and what that means is that it will require six votes in order to approve the rezoning, six of seven. You may recall back in April you did a comprehensive plan amendment, and at that time you actually amended the future land use plan on the comprehensive plan to make this area community commercial as a result of the request from this applicant to be able to expand his use there. And so this zoning action is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and as a result, Plan Commission did unanimously recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time it is a public hearing. I would like to open a public hearing on item 4A, a proposal ordinance amending the zoning district map for properties located at 911 and 915 Broad Street. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Once again, I'll call anyone who would like to speak on item 4A on the agenda, please step forward now. Third and final call, is there anyone who would like to speak on item 4A, proposal ordinance amending the zoning district map for properties located at 911 and 915 Broad Street? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing at this time and entertain a council discussion. Comments or questions? Councillor De Force?
I do have a question. Did Ms. Sigworth articulate why she's opposed in particular to the rezoning, for specific reasons?
Her and her sons came and basically said that this area has always been a really nice area, that she raised her sons there, and they would like it to remain in a residential type use, and they didn't like the idea of the smell of gas, the expansion of a gas station, the lights. She felt that having a bigger store there, a convenience store, might compete with Walgreens, and that might be a bad thing. So there were kind of a multitude of reasons.
She resides at?
318 Harrison, I think is the address.
Okay.
There's a map in there, and it's the one that's on Harrison. I don't know if that's 318 or not, but, and then the other two are multi, well, one is, I think they're both multifamily residential. They're rental properties, which are currently for sale, is my understanding.
So in terms of looking at the block, she's on the far upper quadrant, opposite corner of the block.
If you look at the map, that's, I don't know what page it is on your electronic packet, but it's, it shows the property she owns, 911 and 915 are currently vacant lots because those houses were condemned and demolished. So she owns, then, the properties, you know, back behind there. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions of him.
Is that where the apartment, the huge multi-unit apartment building is?
318, or, no, 318 isn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Nuneal?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a question for the owner.
Yeah, there.
If you could step forward, sir, and please give your name and address.
My name is William Bogart, and I'm an attorney, and I'm representing Mr. Raj Patel, who is standing beside me, who is the petitioner in this matter.
Okay.
Any questions? We'd be glad to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and it's always a pleasure to have a great Beloit historian and former city councillor here with us this evening. I was wondering, since there was some concern with the neighbors, and being familiar with that block, there's that alley back there. I think that currently there's a fence that is in place that blocks property lines.
That's correct. You should have in your packets, I have one anyway, a prepared by the neighborhood planning division showing the Sigworths and their property and the two parcels we're speaking of, which is 911 and 915 of Broad Street, which is abutting onto 903, which is Clark Gas Station, which has been there for?
Forty years.
Yeah, forty-some years. I think you can visualize the situation on that corner. It's not a good situation. It's hard to get in and out of. The pumps are rather close together, and if you get in there and you try to get out of Broad Street, you've got to be very patient, and I think most people, like I do, swing on a park avenue, take a right and go to get to the stoplight. But Raj would like to acquire those two parcels of real estate to expand his business, and that isn't imminent. It isn't going to be done tomorrow. There's no plans or anything else. He's in the gas business, but he doesn't get any money from Washington for stimulus.
Okay.
You have to have an oil company for that, I guess, and eventually, as economic times change and he accumulates the necessary funds, he'd have to come back to the city with a proposal for development of that property and start actually from scratch, you know, as to complying with the rules and regulations of exits, entrances, and distances, and so on. He recognizes that.
Councillor Nuneal, did you address your question?
My question was, and thank you very much for that background for that, was, in your plan, because the way that this is drawn up, the new zoning district map, unless there is a variation to the current city codes, it may not come before the body, this body again. So I just wanted to make sure that you were going to at least maintain, if not try to enhance that to be a good neighbor, since it is a combination presidential and commercial. I wanted to hear your view or your thoughts.
Sure. Fencing the back along the side is something that would be?
We're going to have the pants in the back and the side up, so there is no traffic going on.
Okay. It's for protection of the business as well as the neighbors.
Yeah.
For traffic into the alleyway, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Councillor? Councillor De Force?
Sorry. Will your business be open 24 hours at that point, or right now you close, I believe, at 10?
Right now, we're closing at 10 o'clock.
Do you plan to expand the hours?
If business, I think we might stay at 12 or maybe 24 hours, but I'm not sure at this time.
All right.
And we might do open early in the morning, because coffee and donut and stuff. Right now, we don't have anything in the store.
Anything else, Councillor De Force?
Yes, are you planning to have diesel as well?
Not at this point, I'm not sure.
I'm concerned about diesel engines for neighbors chasing at 2:00 in the morning.
A lot of people asking me for the diesel fuel, but we don't have right now, so we might add the diesel, one pump maybe.
Let me jump in and just clarify. I think he's just want to acquire the property right now. I don't think right now there's any plans of expansion right at this particular moment, but somewhere down the road, if you see the need be, then that's when you're going to talk expansion, correct?
Yeah.
And as far as the diesel, if the concern is trucks, there just simply wouldn't be any room to get trucks in and out of that property.
Right.
I mean it.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's rather competitive business also, with big parking areas and so on. They simply couldn't handle that type of business.
Councillor Vanda Bogart?
I was going to make a motion that we suspend the rules and proceed to action on the merits.
Second. Motion by Vanda Bogart, second by Councillor Dentz. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none now, if we can get a motion on the merits.
Move to approve 4A. Second.
Motion by Councillor Dentz, second by Councillor Haynes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Item 4B, please.
4B is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1982 Cranston Road from C1 Office District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District. There is a request for the first reading and to suspend rules for the second reading, and Plan Commission recommended approval 4-0.
Staff presentation, please.
First American Credit Union has submitted this application to rezone the property located at 1982 Cranston from C1 to C2 Neighborhood Commercial. The purpose for the rezoning is really to allow their new sign, which they would like to be electronically a variable message sign, to be allowed, because it's not allowed in C1, it would be allowed in C2. The comprehensive plan does recommend neighborhood commercial for this location and a C2 zoning classification, so it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The use itself is allowed in either district, but in order to have the message sign they'd like to have, they would need the C2 zoning. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing and did recommend approval unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing on item 4B, proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1982 Cranston Road. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 4B? Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 4B? Third and final call, is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 4B? Seeing none, open up for council questions. No council questions, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion by Councillor De Force, second by Councillor Haynes to suspend the rules. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Now, if I can get an approval for the merits, please.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councillor Haynes, second by Councillor Johns. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. 4C, please.
4C is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 2016 Cranston and 2125 Schuster from C1 Office District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District. There is a request for further rules for second reading, and Plan recommended approval 5-0.
Thank you. Staff presentation, please.
McBain Enterprises owns these two properties at 2016 Cranston Road and 2125 Schuster Drive, and has made the request to rezone these to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District. 2016 Cranston Road contains a vacant commercial structure, and 2125 Schuster Drive is currently vacant land. They do not have immediate plans for 2125 Schuster Drive. They're simply attempting to try to increase the marketability of the properties. The C1 district is a lot more restrictive, it's more of an office district. C2 does allow more retail sales and service-oriented businesses. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which does recommend C2 Neighborhood Commercial District for this site. Plan Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open a public hearing for item 4C. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 4C? Is there anyone here would like to speak on item 4C? Third and final call, anyone here would like to speak on item 4C? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and ask for council comments or questions at this time. Seeing no council comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Motion by Johns, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Dentz. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes.
Remove approval of the underlying residential ordinance, rather.
Second. So in motion and second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Passes. Item 4D, please.
Item 4D is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1800 Gateway Boulevard from R3 Low Density Multifamily Residential District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District. There is a request for the first reading to suspend the rules for the second reading, and Plan Commission recommended approval 4-0.
Staff presentation, please.
Wisconsin Power and Light is applying for this rezoning for a portion of 1800 Gateway Boulevard from R3 to M1, and they also commissioned a certified survey map, which was reviewed by Plan Commission at its June 9th meeting and was approved, to create a new parcel for the substation that they are proposing, electrical substation they're proposing on their site. If this is approved, they will purchase the property from MLG and proceed with this development. MLG did come to the last Plan Commission meeting and did express that they would ensure that there was adequate landscaping on the site to fit in with the Gateway Business Park. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing and did recommend approval of the rezoning to M1 to allow the electrical substation.
Thank you.
And this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which shows this entire area as business park.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to open a public hearing for item 4D, a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1800 Gateway Boulevard. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone who would like to speak on item 4D? Third and final call, is there anyone who would like to speak on item 4D? Seeing none, I would open up for council discussion. See? Do you have a question, Councillor De Force?
Yes, if you have a question.
It's impossible for me to read the details of the blueprints that are provided electronically. What is the highest elevation point of the equipment at the substation? Because it looks like there's one very tall tower, if I?
That's difficult to say.
May I ask you, as you come to the mic, and state your name, please? Thank you.
Rod Clark with Liant Energy, Wisconsin Power and Light. Until we have a design, you know, considering that this is such a steep slope where the proposal is for the substation, there are some facilities in there, could be 30 feet high. You have to get wires above the mainframe of the equipment that's going to be in there. I think the tallest thing you see out there is probably the existing transmission line that's at the top of the hill.
Okay.
With those structures.
I'm seeing a pole here, and the print is so tiny, I can't see what it's called or what it's on.
There is a communication pole that goes in so that we can relay and talk to the substation remotely.
Okay.
Then there's lighting, but, you know, that single pole might be 60 feet to 100 feet tall, depending on how steep it's going to be at that grade.
You said 60 to 100 feet?
That's true.
60 to 100?
That's my understanding, yes.
And you're building it, because it's quite a steep grade there?
It is.
You're building it on the side of the steep grade where it won't be as visible?
It's as far away from the road as you can probably get and still have some buffering around all sides of it.
Okay.
You know, it will take some cut and fill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Nuneal? Oh, sorry.
I don't know the distance. Were the tenants or residents at, because it looks like it might be greater than 100 feet, at Hawks Ridge, were they noticed about this?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Hawks Ridge apartment, was noticed.
Okay. All right. And you didn't hear any comments or feedback from, okay, thank you.
Councillor Nuneal?
Thank you, Mr. President.
That's okay.
As a follow-up to Councillor De Force's question, the residents then also, as you go up Eagles Ridge, those residents would also see that tower that they noticed?
They were not noticed. There is a sign that we would put out for the zoning.
All right, but since it's a construction area, they probably wouldn't have an opportunity to see the sign at this point. Might be a good reason not to suspend the rules this evening. But my question was, thank you very much for being here tonight, and we do appreciate your investment in our community. This parcel is a unique parcel in that it also holds wetlands on it, is that correct?
Correct.
I was wondering what your plans are for those.
The wetlands won't be touched, you know, and you'll see that there is a certified survey map that was approved. With that certified survey map, you'll notice that there is a water and sewer easement that runs through the middle of the property, kind of is a natural division between the wetlands and the area that we'll be developing. We did do a topo of the area, and you'll can see that we tried to set up a substation that will avoid those. Of course, there's a lot of regulations that govern the substation and detention-retention ponds that have to be met when you're anyplace near any sort of wetland area.
Thank you. And again, because of the nature of this type of zoning ordinance, this may not come before us again for that, I would strongly encourage you to do extra landscaping and extra vegetation that might filter the water better in that grade.
You know, and it's hard to show on the little substation, we said, in which you'll see a large detention-retention basin that's a filter for that. So then it'll probably, and I don't understand all of it, but there'll be an overspill that would, then after it's filtered out, if it rains that much, where it's going to create a problem, it would be a spillway on it.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Councillor De Force?
Thank you. I know you and I talked a little bit before, but I just wanted to be clear, you'll be working with the DNR in terms of protecting that wetland and then making sure that the detention pond?
There are rules and regulations that we have strictly adhered to on that. Part of it is what is determined by the detention-retention basin and how much disturbance there is.
Okay. Do you foresee with the construction, that you anticipate that there'll be disturbance to that wetland area?
No.
Okay. It's far, it looks it's quite a far distance away.
It's quite a distance away, right. You know, with any disturbance, you're going to put up silt fencing and everything else that's involved with anything that could possibly have any runoff. It's pretty restrictive on building.
And I guess, I'm trying to ascertain how far, because I don't have the map here, Eagles Ridge is, are those residents there?
They're quite a distance away.
Okay.
There really is, at this point, nothing else. I think Curry might be the closest.
This is your map, this is the site.
Right.
The actual residence is our way down here. Hawks Ridge is here.
Right.
I mean, it's quite a distance from all of them.
Okay.
And it has got a purpose. I mean, it's utility, it's not an industrial use.
Right.
It's a utility that's going to provide electrical service out there.
Right.
So it's got to be located somewhere out there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You notice that there is a transmission line along the south edge of the property. Those poles themselves will probably be the tallest structures out there, and they've been out there for quite a while.
Okay, so we're not, that pole that I was looking at will be?
Well, considering we're going to be pretty low to begin with, and I'll bet you that those poles are at least 60 to 80 feet tall, and at the top of the hill, you would suspect that we'd be way below that. To be a single monopole, it's not going to look like an antenna.
Nothing about the existing transmission lines, then, you're suspecting, okay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the pole out there will just be a single monopole, it isn't going to be a large pole structure.
It'll be a monopole. Just hard to tell.
It is very minuscule when an electric?
And you know, we don't have the design done, so if those deals come forward, we usually work with the staff quite closely.
Okay, great. And we trust Julie?
Greatly so.
To advocate for the landscaping, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Councillor Johns will take that motion now.
Second.
So in motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-1. Now to the merits, is there a motion?
Motion is free. Second.
In motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you. We're not on the agenda for a time for citizens' participation. At this time, citizens may come forward to speak. Council will not act on anything that you bring up this evening. We ask you to limit it to three minutes, we will not cut you off. We do ask that you refrain from personal attacks on councillors and staff at this time. I did receive one citizen's participation signup sheet, and it is from Mr. Mike Warden. If you could come forward, state your name and address. And I believe you're going to be speaking for a request for streetlights on Bluff Street and between Sherlin and Grand Avenue.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Good evening, councillors, my name is Mike Warden, I live at 518 Bluff Street, and the reason I'm before you today is I'd ask that, starting from Liberty on Bluff and going south to Sherlin there, you guys have installed some 19th century, late 19th century, early 20th century lighting there, which looks very, very nice for the historic district which we're in, but it stops at Grand Avenue, and you get from Grand Avenue to Sherlin there, we've got the woodpecker posts up there. And I just thought if they're going to do anything in your power to just continue that on, which is three blocks to Sherlin there, and, you know, make it all uniform with the rest of the block, I'd be most appreciative, as well as my neighbors, and I live next to the former Deb Nelson, she used to be a city woman here, she passed in November, and so I guess I kind of do this in her name also, so, if you consider that, I'd most appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess if I can ask this, if we can give us his information to Mr. Botts, and maybe Mr. Botts, someone from your staff, could be in communication with him? That'd be okay. Thank you. At this time, we're at the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent? Is there any item on the consent agenda that a council would like to be removed? Otherwise, we will take them all at one motion. Councilor DeForest?
I'd like to request, Mr. President, that items J and M be removed.
Thank you. Councilor Johns?
I'd request item K, please.
Thank you. Any other council would like any items removed? Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of items A through I, L, N through P. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda. Is there a second? It's been motion and second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item J, resolution to warning contract. Mr. Box, please. And, sure, I would, I would, I think, go, yeah, go, I'm sorry, go ahead and ask your question. Yeah, go ahead.
I do have a very specific question. I was concerned about the amount of the allowance for change orders and/or extra work. The total base bid is a little over $3 million, but the allowance for change orders is almost half a million. It seems disproportionately high, given the budgeted work. I'm just wondering why that allowance for change orders is so significantly high?
Typically, we use about 15% for change orders.
State statute.
Well, that's as high as we can go. And so that's why we put it in there, so we can go to the highest allowable amount we can for change orders if we need to. And on a contract this big, that's why you get a big number like that. It's not that it'll be used, but if you authorize something less than that, then we need to come back to you to get more funding made available for the project if we need it.
Okay, and I'm assuming that, I'm trying to think how to say this without affecting you, I'm sorry. I, I'm concerned, that's a lot of money for change orders and/or extra work, and I'm assuming then that you'll be overseeing the utilization of that amount and making sure that it's realistic or reasonable. It's half a million dollars.
We always do.
Okay. And I don't mean to offend you, it's a lot of money.
Well, I'm not offended by it. Every change order is approved and reviewed and make sure that it's what it should be. I mean, we just don't randomly just give out money because it doesn't seem to, you know, fit in a project.
And I see that this did come in still under the engineer's estimate, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item J?
Second.
It's been motion and second. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven, zero. Item K, Councilor Johns, you have a question on this one? Okay. All right, so no questions. At this time, I would entertain a motion for item K.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
It's been motion and second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes six, one, with Councilor Johns voting against it. Thank you. Item M, Councilor DeForest?
Yes, I have several questions related. Sorry.
Why are you researching questions? That's okay. Item M is resolution approving compliance, maintenance, and a report. And Mr. Box will be the presenter.
Would you like me just to jump in with my question, Mr. President, or...
All right, I think I would be comfortable with that.
Okay. So, sorry, I'm just, let me jump, still making notes on the last. So this is the compliance and a report, and I wanted to, and I did have some correspondence, and I asked some of my questions to the department earlier to do some background homework on it, and I just wanted to know what our plans are in regard to excess phosphorus, because that is a concern. And by the way, kudos to our staff, because overall, our ratings are fantastic in the compliance report, but we did only rate a B in terms of effluent, and especially am concerned about the excess phosphorus. Do we have any plans for addressing that? Could you speak to those?
Yes, we do. What happened during that one month, and it happens occasionally, is that somebody will release an extra amount of phosphorus that gets into the system and goes to our plant. That came into the plant, it was higher than what we normally deal with. The, typically, when we see this stuff happening, we go contact or try to find out who's doing something. A lot of times, we find out that a business has done some cleaning in their facilities, and that, and they typically use cleaning agents that have phosphorus in it, and so it comes to our plant. And so when we find those things, we try to work with those people to make sure they change their way they do business so that they don't dump extra phosphorus to us. And you're correct. Soon in the future, we're going to have lower effluent restrictions on our phosphorus, and so we'll have to deal with those things more often, and it'll probably come to a large expansion requirement to our plant in order to meet those needs of our new permit requirements that'll come up somewhere probably in 2013, 14.
So we're looking at probably future CIP items, because we're not currently set up to address eliminating phosphorus to the degree that's needed. Is that correct or anticipated in the future?
That's correct. We aren't set up, we, right now, our limit is two milligrams per liter. We typically operate around .5. The EPA and the DNR are looking at taking it down to possibly a .1 limit. So we'll have to do something to treat our effluent more than what we currently do now. Right now, we're just all biological. We're going to have to add chemicals to the plant.
Okay. And then, we weren't able to identify, I'm trying to think of not a negative term to call the, the, I guess, the initial source of that excess phosphorus that we experienced during that month? Is that correct?
Not at that time. There were three days where it came in high.
Okay.
And then our plant naturally took care of that. So it works it out by itself. But at that time, we were not. We do contact all our industries to try to encourage them to be more careful in how they discharge the plant.
Okay, good. That was my next question. So we were doing some follow-up education with all of our industrial users?
Typically do that.
On a regular basis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, only other questions were answered in our correspondence. Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for item M. There's been motion and second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven, zero. Seven ordinances, please.
Item 7A is a proposed ordinance to amend sections of the municipal code relating to updates and modifications to various ordinance provisions of boards, committees, and commissions. This is a second reading.
Thank you. Our city manager, Hare.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and councilors. This is an ordinance that, as you can see, provides for a lot of housekeeping updates and various, what I would call, routine modifications to Chapter 1 of the municipal code dealing with boards, committees, and commissions. We try to modernize the ordinances, and in many respects, the city clerk did a very nice job of going through the Liquor Control Commission ordinance and updating that. We went through, we made the appointment processes systematic among all of the boards and commissions. We provided for continuity of service for the counselor appointments until a successor is appointed to that particular committee. We also streamlined and clarified how former or retired city employees can serve on the committee, and made a few other housekeeping changes of that nature. Probably the only real substantive component of the change is a requirement or provision basically repealing the old cable television committee. As councilors are aware, that was done following a recommendation we received from the committee itself. And as you know, their mission has long since been assumed by both the state and federal government, the city can no longer even franchise for cable television operations. So the municipality has no regulatory oversight of cable TV other than our normal construction in the right of way or other public spaces standards, which we enforce with all utility companies. So the mission of this committee, when it was formed back in the late '70s, early '80s, is actually gone, and it'll be repealed as a result of this ordinance modification. If councilors have any other specific questions about any of the changes, they are redlined in the draft document, I'd be happy to try to answer those at this time.
Thank you. Is any council with any questions or comments? Now, if I can entertain a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading?
Excuse me, it is a second reading.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was just so used to the other one, suspend the rules for a second reading, okay. Then you take it back, if I can get a motion for approval. Been motion and second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item 8 is appointments we have done this evening. Item 9 is council activities and upcoming events, and we will start with Councilor Haynes.
I think this afternoon.
Councilor Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. This scares me tonight. I'd like to send out a delayed congratulations to both our Beloit Memorial girls and boys' track teams for an outstanding season. Kevin, you probably have a better idea of how far exactly they went, maybe you can touch on that, but I know they did really, really well this year. I'd also like to congratulate our very own Rock County Robins and our very own Beloit Titans for their recent wins. Both teams are undefeated. If you're looking for some great, fast, semi-pro sporting events, you don't need to look any further than Beloit. Both these teams, Rock County Robins, are a semi-pro women's basketball team, and the Beloit Titans are a football team. The women play Saturday in Chicago against the Chicago Cardinals, and the Beloit Titans play this Saturday at 4:00. Actually, they play the Cardinals, sorry, the girls play the Eagles. Titans play at Titan Stadium, known by most people as Beloit Catholic, at 4:00. So come on out, watch the game, and keep rooting them on for a continued undefeated season. Thank you.
Councilor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to our hometown Beloit Snappers for finishing the first half of the season strongly. It was a great start, tough in the middle, but an excellent finish, and so hopefully the second half will take it this year. And then also, happy first day of summer to everyone, and encourage everyone to get out and enjoy all of our wonderful parks. My particular challenge is to go out and explore a park that you haven't visited in recent years. There are many, many great parks throughout our entire city.
Thank you. Councilor DeForest?
I would like to congratulate the staff that specifically supports our parks and recreation, and I would like also to encourage our residents to take advantage of our beautiful parks. Every time I go out to, I'm going to mess up the formal name of it now, I'm supposed to know it, the Turtle Creek, the Turtle Creek Area Park, the watershed there. What is the formal name? Somebody help me. Thank you. I've been here too long, Beloit, but I love it. So every time I go out there, I discover a new wildflower. I go out every two weeks or so and find a new wildflower, so that's been very exciting. No matter how many times you walk through our parks, you discover new things, and I'm so appreciative of the quality of our parks, and such a wonderful place to raise a family and be able to expose my children to these wonderful places. Still absolutely in awe of Big Hills Park, to have a park of that size and quality and magnitude of first city park is really quite a compliment to the city of Beloit, so I want to encourage you to get out and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dent?
I would just like to encourage citizens to enjoy the upcoming Fourth of July festivities, and also to remind them that the city budget no longer funds the fireworks and hasn't for some time. That's funded by private donations, and we are still seeking donations to fund this year's fireworks display. And so if you are at all able, and we understand that these are hard times for a lot of people, but if you'll pardon the pun, you do get a lot of bang for your buck with that. So if you'd like to give to that, and there is some recognition for it, please contact, visit Beloit, they're collecting the money for that. And above all, be sure to go down and enjoy it, the music and getting together with your fellow citizens, and of course, the fireworks displays are always, always a treat.
Thank you. Councilor Randy Bogart?
Councilor Noonan referred to it already, but the summer solstice, the longest daylight day of the year, it's a good time to make some plans to get out and enjoy all the different things we have going on, from, goodness, you started listing, Beckman Mill, music at Harry's Place, on and on, Pops on the Rock coming up on the Fourth of July. Get out and enjoy stuff.
Thank you. And I would just like to announce to the Beloit community that on this Sunday, June 27th, at 3 o'clock PM in the afternoon, the Emmanuel Baptist Church will be holding a reception for Mrs. Regina Prude, who's been here for 36 years. She's the wife of the late Dr. Reverend Floyd Prude Jr., who passed away back in November. She will be relocating to Nashville at the end of the month, so we want as many people from the community to come out to the reception and give her a fond farewell. She's been very instrumental in the, in the community and with a lot of people who know her, so I'm asking, I'm letting the community know that it's going to be this Sunday, from, starting at 3 o'clock PM, come out and give her well wishes. Thank you. That concludes the council activities and upcoming events. City managers, report item 10. City manager, Hare.
We do have a program tonight, Mr. President. We have an update for you on the Community Development Department, the programs and activities the department undertakes as part of our overall community development, neighborhood preservation program. Julie Christensen and Tom Clipper are here this evening to present, and we do have a PowerPoint for you to follow the program. Julie?
And I will start, and I'm going to let Tom do his own division, and then I'll go back to the remaining two. Let's hope I can do this. This is the organizational chart, which is obviously hard to read, but shows the divisions within community development, which is housing services and code enforcement, planning, the Housing Authority, and then we've also included more of a program, which is the Community Development Block Grant Program. And pass off, Tom.
Good evening. I'll go over housing services and code enforcement. We currently have five programs, the Code Enforcement, Building Services and Inspection, Housing Rehabilitation Revolving Loan Program, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which is our new program, and the Neighborhood Development Initiative. The city has seven code inspectors responsible for about 14,000 parcels. We do citywide code enforcement. We also do residential fire inspection, Section 8 inspections. We now do snow removal enforcement and solid waste violations. How do we locate these violations? Routine observation, citizen complaints, referrals from other city departments, our systematic interior rental inspections, and our Section 8 inspections. Basically, when the, when the code inspectors are out, we identify the code violations. We send an order letter which outlines what the violations are and the timeframe for compliance. All complaints and citations are entered into our mutus code module for tracking. The staff will work with property owners upon request, and we will give reasonable extensions if they need more time to comply with the orders. If the code violation is not corrected, a citation is issued, and those are the amounts of the citations. Examples of violations, these are the ones we try to correct immediately. Motor vehicles parked and stored on grass, unregistered, unlicensed motor vehicles, vehicles over one ton that are not allowed to be parked in a residential area, working on motor vehicles in your driveway. You can do it within your garage, but you cannot do it on your driveway. And bulky appliances stored on the property. Five to seven days to correct tall grass, which we've had a lot of the last couple months because of all the rain, weeds, and trash and debris. Within 30 days, we like interior, interior repairs, including electrical and plumbing, and those obviously are usually found during our interior inspections. Screens and storm windows and dead trees. We have 60 days to correct exterior painting, large property maintenance projects such as new roofs, replacement of stairs, that sort of thing, and, like I said, roof repair and replacement. And then 120 days we give for major property maintenance issues, major rehab that needs to be done to buildings.[1786.01] Statistics, I'll just go over from 2009 to 10. 2009, we did over 12,000 inspections, issued almost 4,000 orders, and happy to the result of 89% resulted in compliance. This year, in the first quarter, almost 15,000 inspections, 792 orders issued. And again, we're on the same track of 89% in compliance, and I hope to improve on that. Because we really do see this as more of an education. We don't like to give citations out, and we do send out the order letters just to let people know, you know, what, what the violations are and what they can and can't do on their properties. The other service we offer are, is the building inspection. We have three building inspectors who are responsible for plumbing, HVAC, building, electrical, and our three inspectors are cross-trained in different areas. In 2009, this doesn't look so good, but unfortunately, this is how it was in the country, too. We only had four building permits for new residential construction in 2009, and five building permits for new commercial. I will tell you, I have seen the wheels starting to turn a little faster this year, especially on the commercial side. So I think we're slowly coming out of this slump. Alterations and additions, accessory buildings, we had 559 residential permits for that and 66 commercial. And then last year, we had 31 residential demolition permits. That's a combination of individuals tearing down properties or condemnations that we, we did last year, and six commercial demolitions. We have our Housing Rehab Revolving Loan Program. This, homeowners that are low to moderate income can take advantage of loans to do repair to the properties. In 2009, 14 loans provided to owner occupied. We also allowed some loans to rental, for rental rehab. So we did eight of those units, and we did 20 lead hazard grants for 14 units completed. The lead hazard grants have been, been a very good program. It, it complements our rehab program. It allows us to extend more money to more people. And we are receiving another grant through the state of Wisconsin. We are currently now through 2013. Other assistance available, the paint program, which is now housed in Housing Services also. We just keep growing. So we are able to provide paint and labor to income-eligible homeowners. And then there's also the Beloit Chore Service for citizens over 60 years old. They can receive assistance with lawn mowing, carpentry, and so forth. The Wisconsin Neighborhood Stabilization Program, this is another chunk of stimulus money that the city of Beloit received. We currently have, four homes have been acquired. They are, memory serves me right, 615 McKinley, five, no, 1510 Elm, 932 Ninth, and, no, it was 1157 Elm, and of course, the last one escapes me, oh, Garfield, 827 Garfield. All those are in various stages of rehab. The 615 McKinley was the first home that we acquired, so that is making a lot of progress and should be on the market within a month or two. Five homes have been acquired for demolition, and three of them have already been torn down. One, we have an offer to purchase for the vacant land to owner occupied, property owner next door. And proceeds from the sales of the homes will be reinvested and will continue the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. So when we sell a property, we'll then look for another property that has been foreclosed and continue the process. There's also, we can have continue the Neighborhood Development Initiative. In these areas, we still do enhanced code enforcement, and there's multiple public infrastructure improvements going on in these neighborhoods. This, there's the two, there's the college area and the Bluff Street area. And on to planning.
Planning Division is a much smaller division than Housing Services, but they do, do a lot of work. We do have a comprehensive plan that meets the state law, and at this point, starting January 1, all of our landy sections have to be consistent with that plan. It is available on the city's website. Anyone can download and look at all the sections of the code. We also have copies at City Hall. And the staff is also responsible for administration of the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, the historic preservation ordinance, landscape and architectural review ordinances, and they provide staff to Plan Commission Landmarks and Board of Appeals. The fact that there's two, just two planners in that department, they do a lot of work. All the staff reports that come to you, to the Plan Commission, are written by two planners who do an excellent job. I just want to say that. And then there's Community Development Block Grant Program. This is money we get, as you know, from the federal government. We get an annual allocation, plus the budget also includes program income that's earned by programs like our revolving loan funds for housing rehab and ED. NHS also has monies for purchase rehab that revolve each year, and then our rental permit program. And the goal is essentially to fund programs that meet the needs of low and moderate income people, and there's a secondary, eliminate slums in Beloit. We don't tend to fund those kind of programs, but we can. These are generally the categories. There's a few more besides this, but these are the main categories that we fund under Community Development Block Grant. We fund a lot of public service, housing rehab, code enforcement, ED, planning, and public administration, and fair housing on an annual basis. But there are other categories available, as you can see on this list. And this is just essentially the basic guidelines for block grant, and then the bottom part talks about the fact that we have started again setting funding priorities for Community Development Block Grant funding in 2009. I mean, the priorities are listed there. CDA is looking at 2010 priorities at this time, and I would expect on one of your future agendas, you'll have actually approving those funding priorities for 11, I mean, I mean for the 11 funding cycle. This was what was funded for 10, which you were aware of, but I... And then, not a separate division, but kind of a separate program within the Planning Department is the Landmarks and Historic Preservation. You've seen this not too long ago. When we went through the PowerPoint on Landmarks Commission, the Landmarks Commission Chairman and Vice Chair actually came. Staffed by the Planning Division, they review COAs, certificates of appropriateness for buildings within the historic district. It was established in 1990, shortly after adoption of the ordinance, and they actually work very, very hard, this commission. This Old House, Beloit was included in the list of best old house neighborhoods 2010. We were very excited about that, and we thank Rick McGrath, he really works really hard. He's the chairman of that commission, and he really is out there, his neighborhood group and landmarks, and really trying to promote historic preservation in our community. And then the last division, last but not least, is the Beloit Housing Authority. The goal of the Housing Authority is to assist in providing adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and a suitable living environment, free from discrimination for low-income elderly and disabled residents. We do have 131 low-income public housing units. 91 are for families, 40 for elderly, disabled, and handicapped. This is your general income limit for public housing, which is higher than Section 8. Essentially, you know, the bigger your household, the income levels go up. So actually, if you look at our community, there's a lot of households that could qualify for public housing. The Section 8 program, 500, we're eligible for 598 housing choice vouchers. That's essentially your, what people are most familiar with, I think, is you get a voucher, you go rent from a landlord, so it's not owned by the city, it's not owned by the Housing Authority, the CDA. It's actually owned by landlords in our community. They actually provide the housing, we provide the money for the housing. So housing assistance for the household. And this is the income limit for Section 8, which is actually significantly lower. Public housing limits are set at more of a moderate income level, and Section 8 is at a lower income level in terms of low versus moderate income. And this is some of the renderings from our public house remodeling and energy efficiency project. We did, we were awarded tax credits for Phase 1 last year. We have been gradually working through a process with an architect and a bunch of consultants to bring this forward. We expect to close on the tax credits within a month, and then we will begin work with clovercar construction on the project. Friday, we found out we've been awarded Phase 2, which will be for, this was for the first 65, and the Phase 2 is the remaining 66. So by the end of the whole project, Phase 1 and Phase 2, there'll be a new face on public housing, which is very exciting, a little scary, but very exciting project for this community. And are there any questions?
Any questions? Counselor DeForest?
I have some questions for Tom.
I knew you did.
You always do.
Doing my job. I have questions about inspections. And I'm wondering how, how you could account for the change, the increase in compliance. I know at one point, we talked about softening the order letter, negotiating more with residents about extending the time they have to satisfy the orders. I mean, do you think it's some of those things, or do you think there's other things at play here that have helped increase our, our compliance rate?
I think part of it is that we've now been doing citywide code enforcement for...
Six plus years.
Yeah, six. And over that time, we've, we've educated, and we have a brochure that we send out. We always answer questions that people may have. Not everybody is happy to receive these orders, but after a while, I think they understand why we do what we do. So I think people are just getting used to code enforcement, and also their knowledge hasn't, has increased as to what you can and can't do. That's my best guess. I mean, I, I can't put a finger on one thing or another. I think it's a combination of all the activities we've been doing over the years, plus these types of presentations. I have gone out to community groups and given presentations. So I think it's just getting the word out. My staff has been out, and they've, they've given presentations to neighborhood groups.
Okay. In the, in the order letters, does it specifically state that if, if a property owner has difficulty satisfying the requirements of the order, that they could contact your office to discuss the matter?
It does state if you have questions, and it gives the phone number and the name of the inspector.
Okay. I mean, I don't mean to micromanage, but it just seems that, because my concern is that some property owners know that, and maybe some don't, and I want to make the playing field level. And it, it might help even more compliance if people know that, you know, if there's a hardship issue or some related issue, that they can contact your office and that you'll work with them in terms of helping, you know, because the ultimate goal is to have the work done.
I would have to consult with the city attorney on, on changing the letter.
Okay.
And I think there's, I mean, there's only so much you can do. The letters say what the violation is, it has the inspector's name on it, and at some point, there has to be personal responsibility. I mean, and it's, I don't think it's our job as a city to hand-hold everything. I mean, there has to be some ability to open that letter, and if you're not clear, to call the person whose name is at the bottom and the phone number is right there. I mean, so there has to be some level to which people have to call us to.
But there is an unwritten rule that we've mentioned here in our presentation, that if some residents are having trouble meeting the order requirements, that we'll work with them. Well, that shouldn't be something that's just kind of under the table or just thrown out there for residents.
I don't think it's under the table. I mean, I think...
Should we state it in the letter so residents know that? So it's clear that that is an option, that they could, because that, that's part of the, the, the personal phone calls that we get as, as representatives, that, and that you were informing them, well, you contact the staff and they'll work with you. But if they don't know that, I mean, is there, is there a harm in placing that information in the letter? And I don't know, maybe you could just talk about it.
And legally, there may be. I mean, I don't know, Tom Gasper has to respond to that, but I mean, I think that letter can't have five outs on it. I mean, ultimately, they need to comply. I mean, I think that's the overall goal. But there is on there, if you have any questions, you can call the inspector. And that would be a question that, I mean, we can't generate every possible outcome for people in our letters. It's just not possible.
I think that's a major one, though.
Well, the major one is the law they're breaking. I mean, and it's a code enforcement issue, I think, but...
And I guess I would, I guess I would be careful with that because, unless I'm mistaken, that if it goes on one letter, it probably has to go on all the letters. So then when you're sending the third letter to say you still haven't fixed this, you're still saying, you could call me and we can give you an extension. So you're giving them an extension. So we could check into...
And as long as they're making progress, we will grant an extension. But we don't just grant extensions because they're not gonna do it ever. I mean, they have to be willing to work on it.
I think we need to be careful giving the impression that you can get an extension no matter what, and that's not the case.
Right. Counselor Haynes?
Yes, having received one of those letters once upon a time, I will tell you that it was very clear to me that, you know, that if there was a problem, that I could call staff, and in fact, did, while I was cutting down a rather unsightly tree, and it took me probably three weeks to get rid of the brush. And yes, I did get an order, and yes, I did call them to get an extension. It was quite clear from the doc, from, from the letter that, that, you know, if you ran into problems, you needed to call them. I, I see, it was well-understood by me as the receiving entity.
Thank you. City Mayor?
I was just gonna comment, yeah, the letter has been written and rewritten, and is, I think, as diplomatic as you can make it and still make it a legal notice, because there are certain things that have to be in the letter, otherwise it's not a legal notice, and then you have to start over again. And you have to remember, while you may hear occasionally from a recipient of a letter making a complaint, we hear a lot from neighbors saying, why aren't you guys out there getting that trashy yard cleaned up? So you've got the flip side of the coin as well. And if you send the letter out with a notice in there, all you have to do is call this number to get an extension, they're just gonna keep calling the number, getting extensions. So you basically compromised your own enforcement action. But we deal with these all the time, and people that are acting in good faith routinely get extensions, not just residents, but landlords, business owners as well. And the inspectors do a very good job of working with these people on an ongoing basis. And that's one of the reasons I think you're getting more and more compliance. There's been some enforcement, some folks have had to go to court, and found the court wasn't terribly sympathetic, and they had to pay fines, and that's certainly given the program credibility. But I think the biggest issue here is it's been working now for six years. The inspectors have been on the job. They've gotten to know a lot of the property owners and are working very closely with them in a realistic way and in a realistic timeline to get this work done.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have just one final comment. My concern is, and, and please understand, I only hear anecdotally, you know, from various, and so of course, I take that with a grain of salt. But my concern is that there's a gray area here, and we don't have clearly defined policy about who gets an extension, who doesn't. What are the criteria? It's left up to individual inspectors. And my concern is that what I'm hearing from residents is that some inspectors are much more lenient about working with individuals and giving them extensions and working with them, and others aren't. And so there's a sense of unfair playing field, and I would like to at least consider talking, having a dialogue about that, how to make it a little more clear about what are the criteria for extensions, or at least communicating. I just, I'm concerned because I hear some of that unfairness because we have a number of different inspectors in terms of how they interpret working with the residents.
Well, it's really not unclear. Our, our process is, we will not give an extension if no work has been done. If they've made progress, we will provide extensions within a reasonable timeframe. If they have not started the work, and it's the last day of their time, we won't give an extension because they have not even tried, made an attempt to, to correct the violation. That's our policy.
That is the policy?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Noonan?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Not so much a question, but for, I guess for Julie. Thank you very much. We found a way to promote this incredible accomplishment that we, and honor that we received from This Old House Magazine. Have we found a way, is there our website?
It's on our website. I mean, it was just... And it had media coverage. I mean, there's, I think beyond that, I, I mean, I don't know what else we would do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your presentation, we move to item 11, reports from boards and city officers.
Item 11A is a resolution to provide corporate guarantee to MNI Marshall and Ilesley Bank for the construction loan for phase one of the redevelopment of 65 public housing units project.
Ms. Christensen, please.
Um, as we showed in, uh, rendering, um, we're currently, um, been planning, working very hard on phase one. Many of the existing public housing units are in need of modernization or renovation, we had hired Dimension Development, um, to help us come up with a plan to finance improvements to those buildings in a shorter timeframe, um, rather than how we could do it with our current capital fund program dollars through the housing authority. And so we did receive the tax credits, um, in October of last year, the city council reaffirmed its support of the project and the financing plan for the project. MNI is, the tax, the amount of the tax credits is 6.5 million. MNI Bank is making a construction loan to the LLC, which was formed, um, to basically take over the project and receive the tax credits. And this construction loan was made in order to provide short-term cash flow for the construction project until the tax credit monies are available. In connection with that loan, MNI is requiring the city to guarantee certain obligations of the LLC in terms of that construction loan. The resolution that's on your agenda for action tonight is to reaffirm support for the project, and authorize the city manager to execute and deliver on behalf of the city of Beloit a guaranteed MNI in a similar form to the attached corporate guarantee, guaranteeing those certain LLC obligations to MNI in connect, connection with the construction loan.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, councilor, questions? Councilor DeForest.
Uh, I'd just like to make a comment, I'd like to publicly thank MNI Bank for stepping up and serving as a partner with the city of Beloit in helping us to, um, create beautiful, quality, affordable housing for our residents in Beloit, so I'm pleased that they have stepped up and helped us with the purchase of those tax credits.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval? Is there a motion and second? All those in favor, so anybody who's saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Um, 11B, please.
11B is a resolution authorizing the city of Beloit to amend a portion of the 2010 capital improvements budget.
Chief Jacobs.
Originally, Rock County Information Systems recommended an upgrade in our law enforcement records management system for this year, this was in the present cap- capital improvements budget, but since then, since that recommendation was made, now they are, they noticed a significant problem in our computer aided dispatch system for the county, they're recommending that we switch the improvements from LRMS to CAD, uh, and this is gonna be a recommendation made throughout the county, so we are asking that the 2010 capital improvements budget show this, uh, recommended change.
Thank you. Is there any councilor questions? Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Haynes, second by Councilor Noonan, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Item 12, is there a motion for adjournment? Is there a second? There's been motion and second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.